Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Select Board meeting of Tuesday, December 3rd. We're here at Memorial Town Hall. I'll call the meeting to order. It's 5:30. Does anybody have anything for announcements?
I do. I have a couple of things. The gala is officially sold out. Did I announce that at the last time?
You did.
I couldn't remember. Okay, so it is still officially sold out. And we are selling the candles or the sponsorships of the candles on the cake. If you've had a chance to look at the cake, the candles have gone on. And so if you would like one of those to light, either in your name or your family's name, or you can, you know, make a donation in someone else's name. It's $25 per candle. It's a really nice, inexpensive way for, you know, your family or your loved ones to be part of the Hatfield 350th celebration. So those are available here in the Treasurer's office at the Town Hall. I have some at my house. Anna Holhut has some. Lori Baines has some. Bobby Betzold has some. And they're for sale at different events that are going to be around town. Which brings me to my next announcement, which is next Thursday, December 12th, at 7:00 PM is the winter concert at Smith Academy, which is always really a great, great concert, a nice way to catch a little holiday spirit. And the candles will be available there. So it's $25 per candle. That's it.
Okay, great.
And in the next couple of weeks, Smith Academy basketball games start. So if you're interested in that, you can probably look online for the schedule and come down and support the boys and girls basketball teams.
Perfect. Thank you very much. Ed, did you have anything?
I just want to mention, last week I mentioned Secretary of Agriculture. It's actually Commissioner of Agriculture, and it's the Massachusetts Department of Agricultural Resources, M D A R. So I just want to clarify that. I know Brian now will discuss the M D A R.
Well, it's a very nice segue. So along those lines, thank you, Ed. So we have an announcement that's a little bit old at this point, but it was an announcement made by the Baker-Polito Administration, and they declared November 29th as Green Friday. And it was a declaration made to recognize Massachusetts Christmas tree farms and nurseries. Along those lines, Ed, Diana, and myself, all unknowing, really, that the others were going to be there, we all had the benefit of being at Chestnut Mountain Christmas Tree Farm on Friday and listening to or hearing the announcement of the Energy and Environmental Affairs Secretary, as well as the Commissioner, John LeBeau, read the proclamation that Hatfield was in fact, Chestnut Mountain Christmas Tree Farm was the first official Christmas tree in the state of Massachusetts. So I know Ed had announced that at our last meeting, that it was upcoming. We had actually had the good fortune of being there and hearing all about the farm and meeting the Secretary and the Commissioner. And there was also, in the press release that Marlene just had from the Commissioner's office, there's a picture, and it includes Bob Schrader, the Commissioner and the Secretary. And I was just kind of kidding with my colleagues, saying, "I remember that the three of us were in this picture too." So somehow the state had a way of photoshopping the three of us out of the picture. But maybe they had one without us. I don't know. Anyhow, it was a great day, and congratulations to the Christmas Tree Farm.
Well, and we appreciate the hospitality of Chestnut Mountain Farm.
Yes.
Because they brought us in a horse-drawn wagon all around the property and explained how they plant and how they're good stewards of the land, in addition to, you know, growing the trees and everything. It was really fascinating.
Yeah, it was interesting.
And we got to watch the first Christmas tree be cut.
Yep, absolutely. Yep, it was great.
Very nice. Nice honor.
Very nice honor. The last thing that I have for under announcements is just a reminder that Luminarium is in fact, once again, we've been saying this every other meeting or so, on Saturday, December 21st. So I just wanted to make sure we remind everybody that it's on Saturday this year rather than on Sunday. Okay, nothing else? Marlene, did you have anything?
We're good.
All right. Public forum, is there anybody here for public forum? I don't see anybody. We do have one set of minutes to approve, if you're so inclined, from November 21st.
I'll make a motion. We accept the November 21st minutes as presented.
There's a motion made. Is there a second?
I'll second that one.
Okay, motion's made and seconded. All those in favor? Aye. Great. Thank you very much. All right. Under our posted business, we do have some guests here tonight. We're going to hear from Community Choice Power Supply Program in, is it Denergy or Dynergy? It is Dynergy. Okay. Dynergy Energy Service Supplier. So Mark and Denise are here. This has to do with some changes, potential changes to your Eversource electric bill and the rates. And Mark and Denise are kind enough to sort of give us an overview and explain exactly what will be happening over the next few months and what residents and businesses need to do to either partake or not partake in this program. So I'll turn the floor over to them, if they don't mind.
So Mark Cavanagh, Five Mount Royal App, Marlboro, Mass.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for having us tonight. We're here to talk about what would be your electricity bill and the supply portion of your electricity bill. So from a consumer standpoint, Eversource is still going to be your electricity company. But the town has gone out and procured energy. They're bringing you a choice that you haven't had in years past. So there's going to be a choice that you're going to receive. I want to take one step back and just say, there's been a long process, so I'm going to just explain the process that we've been through. So the town went through a process at past town meeting, and after town meeting, they approved a plan. And then after the plan was approved, we went on to the state, and the state approved the plan that was done, and they issued an order. But for two years, the market wasn't in a position that we liked compared to basic service that we've seen. And later this, earlier this summer, late summer, we did find a market that was very advantageous. The town took advantage of that. They signed a contract with a supplier called Dynergy for a 30-month contract, and the rate that's going to be there is going to be 9897. So the town's program is set for the next 30 months. That will allow you to have this stable rate of 9897. What does that mean to you? So to the end user, that means nothing more than, hey, I have the ability to take this program by the city. I don't need, by the town. I don't need to do anything. Where every single person that's on basic service will receive this mailing. The mailing will come, and it will show you, Eversource has announced their winter rates. We don't know them for the summertime, but their winter rate this coming winter is going to be 11-5-7-1. That starts January 1. The town's program starts with the February meter reads. So everyone will see that first rate in January on their February bills. Use power first, and then we pay for it. We will be sending out a mailing in February, excuse me.
We're targeting December 12th for the mailing to go out. And then there's a 30-day opt-out period. It'll come with an opt-out card, and it'll explain the program, give the rates, and if you'd like to opt out of the program, not be part of the program, you need to sign and return that card that comes in the mailing. And the program will start, like you said, with the February meter reads.
Correct. So in the next week or so, there'll be a piece of mail that's going to come to you. Now, if you're on competitive supply, you won't receive this mailing, but that doesn't mean you can't join the program. You can always go on our website, call our 1-800 number, and we can enroll you in the program. I repeat, it is truly a choice that the town has brought you, meaning if you decide to join the program, that doesn't mean that you have to stay in it for the full 30 months. If for some reason, in the summertime, you wanted to do some other program, you could leave the program and go do that, and then come back to it in the wintertime. Or you could stay in it the whole time, or you could opt out of it. The supplier is taking that risk. If everyone opted out, and one person wanted to stay in, they'd still be afforded that rate. So that rate Dynergy will offer customers for the next 30 months, not here in Hatfield, that's going to be the rate. What does it require, what does it mean to the end user, I think is the main thing people are going to ask? So from an end user standpoint, nothing is going to change. Meaning, if the power goes out, you're going to call Eversource. If you have a problem with your bill, you're going to call Eversource. If there's an issue with your meter, you're going to call Eversource. This is truly just talking about the electron running through the wire, and, you know, call it the commodity piece of it, and you've been procured for 30 months at a very attractive rate. All of that being said, if I was, if I had a farm discount, you'll still receive that farm discount, and you just get this rate. None of that, a budget bill, still receive a budget bill. A low-income discount or a farm rate, all of those benefits are distribution company benefits, and you'll continue to receive those. If you have solar panels, anytime that you're using power, you would just be paying this rate rather than the basic service rate. If you own the panels, it's a little bit different, but if you're renting the panels, normally it's a financial transaction with the utility, and they'll just be paying you whatever the basic service rate is for the usage. So it could be a win-win. So I'm going to use actual numbers. If you were using power right now in the wintertime, you'd be paying that 97, but if you were generating excess power, the utility would be paying you the 11-5-7-1. They always pay utility rates, so they're neutral in the marketplace. I'm trying to think if there was any other issues that might be withstanding. I know that we're going to try to set up a meeting at some point here in the future. I'm going to call it an informational meeting, so once people get that mailing, that they can come down, and Denise and I will be here again, and we can answer any questions anyone might have. So if somebody sees this, we're going to put something in the newspaper, and they have questions, we're just going to try to find a time that works best for everyone. If we need to have more than one, we're happy to come back during the day or at night, what have you, so that we can answer any questions anyone might have.
And later this week, we'll send you over some FAQs and some social media postings or just for the website with some basic information, contact information, Colonial's website, the supplier's number to call, where people can go for more resources if they have more questions. But certainly, they can contact us, but we'll give you some FAQs, so people can find it easily on the town's website or in Town Hall.
Why would someone opt out?
So if for some reason, some, there's lots of people have adhesion to, some people feel like it's an overstep by the government, like, why are they doing that? From my standpoint, as it is right now, the government says you get Eversource. I think it's a little misguided, but that's some of it. And believe it or not, some people think that they need to sign that to enroll, so they're actually opting out by mistake. I just want you to know, if you opt out and you didn't want to, you can always join this program. The program is set up kind of just the opposite of the supplier plans. There are no, I repeat, there's no small print. You can opt in and opt out as a residential anytime you'd like. So there's no fees or penalties to do any of that. So it's truly just a choice that hasn't been there in the past. Whether or not the customer decides to enroll, that's up to them. But truly their choice that hasn't been there in the past.
What, and do you have any figures on the, like, sort of the average electric bill, what the savings is? Because it's clearly a lower rate.
So just guaranteed savings for February, March, April, May, and June. Around, if you were going to, the Department of Public Utilities says use 600 kilowatts. If you're the average customer, you'd save around, should be $10 a month, $10.04 a month. That's what you would be saving. But you don't need to do anything to get that savings. I don't know what the summer rate will be.
Right. Understood. I understand.
Right. I think, thank you very much for the explanation, by the way. Excuse me. And also for providing the information for the frequently asked questions, anything else that might come up. And I think the important thing you mentioned, Mark, was, so the, this rate is guarant, this rate of 9-9897, .9897.
That's correct.
Is guaranteed for the next 30 months. Right now, Eversource as of January 1st will be at 11-5, 11-5-7-1. So, and there's, Eversource's rate can change every six months. And I think Mark alluded to it, that there's, you know, we don't know what the summer might have in store for us, for anybody, for rate payers, but this is sort of a, you know, you know what you're getting right up front. So I mean, you know, to your point of opting in and out, you almost can shop a little bit, you know, come spring, and see if it's advantageous or not.
Are you notified when those rates change? So the summer rates, we could have a different balance, right? And do you notify rate payers?
So there is no notification, other than, we normally will send the rates to Marlene, just saying, these are the rates that have been posted, like we did this time here. Here it is, so that the town's informed. On our website, you can always click on a link directly right there, which doesn't necessarily help people that are on the internet. You can go to our Colonial Power Group, click on Hatfield, and click on basic service rates, and another click gets you to the latest rates right now. But there is nothing that notifies the department's thinking about, which I think would be an excellent idea. Currently, they're not, the utilities don't put on their bill what their rate would be if you're on competitive supply. But I think it would be a wonderful tool, so that people could look at their bill and say, oh, I'm, this I don't, I'm not real worried you guys have really a very aggressive rate, but I'm saying to you, some people pay 22 cents a kilowatt hour, and they're looking at the basic service rate at 10 cents. You know, why am I doing this?
Right.
It would be a very good tool.
Sure. Absolutely.
But it hasn't been implemented yet, but they're thinking about it as a tool to protect the consumer.
I was going to say, I'm surprised the public utility doesn't force it.
Right. If you can opt in and out, you would only do that based on rates and rate changes.
Exactly.
So there has to be a way to know that, right?
And very few, I'm not, the one time I look at the bill, I don't, if I have children, I look at the bill, it's adult value, right? I'm like, whoa, what do the kids do here?
Honestly.
But other than that, I don't look. And mostly, it's a usage issue at my house. Somebody flipped the AC on, and like, whoa. So unless that happens, I don't really see it.
Right.
Great. Did you have any other questions for Mark and Denise?
No. I think it's important to note that after everybody gets their letter, you're going to do a follow-up meeting, so that if anybody still has questions, then they can come back and ask you guys.
Correct. We're going to try to get some dates, Marlene. We'll set it up over the next, the mailing will be out in probably like the next 10 days, and maybe the following week after that. Right the week before Christmas, we'll try to get out, if it's possible. And again, if anyone has any questions at any time, they can always call Colonial. We'll pick it up. That's all we do, is answer Muniag questions, but I just feel like it's easier in person with people, if they're unsure.
That's awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you.
Have a great evening.
Okay, yep. You too. Thank you.
Thank you, Denise. Thank you, Mark.
All right. Thank you for the information. Our next topic of business is regarding the financial director position, which, financial director slash accountant position.
Yes.
And discuss moving forward with what our options are.
Right. So as you know, Mr. Kuzminsky has decided not to accept the town's offer, and I wanted to have some, have a discussion with the board. I would recommend that we consider outsourcing the accounting services. It's the board's decision whether, you know, until June 30th, and maybe between January and June, we, you know, open another search. There are some options, you know, available to us. There's regional services by, you know, a couple of organizations in the area.
Right.
And so I can, you know, set up an appointment with both organizations, meet with the financial staff, or if the board wishes to meet with them.
Okay. So I, to follow up on that, Marlene, thank you for the update. The board had, in fact, along with the Finance Committee, decided on a candidate. We made an offer. Thought that there was a lot of interest, but, you know, things changed, and the offer was not accepted. We didn't even get to negotiation phase. And I would agree with you, Marlene, it's the first week of December. You know, we've got to do something. So at least on the short term, I would agree. Let's get, let's move forward on reaching out to an established accounting firm, municipal accounting firm or organization, business, you know, whatever, so that we can hit the ground running over the next few weeks, hopefully. And then after we get through the first of the year, I would suggest maybe we can regroup and see what we want to do on a go-forward basis. But I think short term, we've worked way too hard to, you know, to, it's too late in the game to repost, in my opinion, for a single, you know, a person to come in. So we need to move forward. We need to keep the ball rolling in the right direction. And so if you would, reach out to your contacts.
I will.
And let's see what we have for options.
See, I don't have a problem with that. Even, I don't have a problem if you have the same committee that was interviewing as the committee that gets together and picks which, from my viewpoint, I mean, I don't know if you need.
Whatever's the easiest.
Everybody.
Yep. Whatever anybody wants to do.
I'm fine. I mean, we don't have a choice.
No, we, so we got to get rolling.
This is the only way we can proceed, given the deadlines that we're facing.
Yep.
With Berkshire, Bay State, excuse me, Bay State Municipal.
Okay.
So I'm fine with that. And I think, you know, opening the search and doing it in a way that doesn't feel like such a tight deadline, and giving ourselves some time to, you know, have that search open a little bit longer might yield, you know, some candidates so that we have some choices.
I agree.
And so.
Plus, we were warned, there's not a lot of municipal accountants out there.
Right.
I mean, they're, they're in demand in the state.
Yep.
And I know Hadley just picked up a company, and other towns have to now pick up companies that Bay State had.
Yeah. So we're all, you know.
We're all on the same boat.
Wasn't there something that Justin said about the time of year that they will consider moving was like spring, like early spring?
When he was here, you know, late fall, and then early spring.
Yeah, so maybe that will.
I think right after, maybe town meetings or something.
Or maybe far enough before them that there's, yeah. But I think that's a good way to move. You don't need a motion to do that.
No.
Okay. Thank you, Marlene.
You're welcome.
So to Ed's point, what we had done was, we had a member of the Select Board, two of the five members of the Finance Committee, a member from the Treasurer's Office, and Marlene, and that's who did the interview of the couple of candidates.
I think that's a good group.
Okay. And then we brought all the information forward to the various full boards to move forward at that point. Okay. So as long as you guys are okay with it.
I mean, I'm in agreement with that.
Okay.
I'm in agreement with that.
Okay, great. All right. Thank you. Good old finance.
Oh.
I know. All right. Marlene, under the Town Administrator Report, we've got some notes regarding the Fire Chief extension.
Yes.
Contract extension.
So you, I have prepared an employment contract amendment for the Fire Chief. As you know, he is going to resign his position and has agreed to stay on until the end of January, and his original contract expired November 30th.
Okay.
So I have prepared an amendment, reviewed it with Town Council, and we just asked the board to vote to approve that amendment, and then sign it later.
And the amendment really is just the, is merely the extension for two more months, basically?
It is.
Okay. All right.
I'll make a motion that we grant this amended contract for extending the contract of Stevie Gahn, Chief Gahn, excuse me.
All right.
I'll second it.
Till January 31st, 2020.
Till January 31st.
Okay, so motion's made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. All right. Thank you.
We thank Steve for being willing to do that.
We, so we have some information regarding the Audit Management Letter that we receive every year from our auditors. And we usually get a draft of that, a preliminary copy. Am I using the right terminology, Marlene? You know, we receive that from them.
We received a draft.
A draft.
And then a final, actually.
A final. And then we respond to.
And we respond to that.
Any questions or information that they're looking for that think would be beneficial to the town on a go-forward basis, so.
We just, you know, if, so.
Excuse me.
We develop a plan or a course of action.
Course of action.
And, you know, reviewing the management letter, a number of sightings actually are applicable to policies we already have in place, our financial policies. So the financial team, including the Treasurer Collector and Justin Cole and I, developed this response that you have in your packet. And what we're responding to are the material weaknesses that are pointed out in the management letter and the recommendations. So we can go through that if you'd like. I don't know if you've had a chance to review.
Well, we looked, I looked through it. I'm sure my colleagues did as well. I mean, I think, just so the people at home understand that, you know, some of what they consider repeated findings, we had already addressed, or we were in the process of addressing.
Right. Some of them were already in the process of.
But the overlapping of this management letter comes at the time we're putting in those new, you know, putting into new processes. So in response to that auditor's letter, that's exactly what we're putting in. That's what our responses say. So for example, grant awards not in possession of the town accountant, repeated from the prior year. Our response is, the grant management is referenced in the town of Hatfield Financial Policy on page 34. You know, so we've already taken past information that we've received or improvements that were requested, and put a policy or a process in place to cut down or to alleviate those I mean, I, really, it's, it's a lot of, I mean, the good news is, it's, the majority of what's on here has already been addressed or was in the midst of being addressed. It's nothing new, really.
Earth's shattering.
Yeah. You know, and part of that was ironing out some past financial issues that the town had. And it's been a time-consuming process, and I'm not making excuses for those of you at home or for our board, but it's a reality that it was time-consuming. And it brings us back to our earlier topic, which is why we need to hit the ground running and find somebody to come in and continue with the accounting services over the next, at least the next few months, till we dust settles, we get through the first of the year, and see how we want to move forward. So are you looking for a, do we actually, we have to send this out? Do we actually have to?
If the board finds this acceptable, I will sign the letter and forward it to Mr. Roselli.
I think it's acceptable.
I do, too. Thank you very much for putting it together, you and the rest of the members of the financial team. So do you want an actual vote for that?
That will be just fine.
You like those votes, I think.
Just to acknowledge that.
Yeah.
You have reviewed it, and.
To go ahead and send it out?
Yes.
Okay. Is that word in acceptance?
Ed, do you want me to make the motion?
I'll make a motion that we have reviewed it and what we see is acceptable as far as our response.
Okay. So the motion's made and seconded to send the auditor the note that we've received and have responded to, any sort of questions they had, and Marlene's going to go ahead and send that letter out. Right? Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Thank you. Nice job, Marlene.
Yes, thank you, Marlene.
Clear and concise responses.
To everybody who worked on this.
Yeah. To you and the whole financial team, so. Okay. Excuse me. So we're looking for a contract with the, well, we had a contract in the past with.
With the Hampshire Council Governments.
Hampshire Council on Governments.
Right, for Chapter 90.
For Chapter 90 discounted rates on certain materials and supplies.
Materials and supplies. And when Hampshire Council Governments dissolved.
Yes.
The Franklin Regional Council Governments picked up the purchasing program.
Right.
And what I am asking the board to do is accept this agreement for the Chapter 90 procurement services. Phil and, Phil Genovese, DPW director and lead highway, Garrett Berry and I met with representatives from Franklin Regional Council Governments about a week and a half ago. And so we're, so I do want to, to know and, and for the record, that they, they being Franklin Regional Council Governments, does have a, a fee to participate in the program. And in the past, with Hampshire Council Governments, the, the vendor paid that fee, but actually, and then built it back into their, you know, they, they got it back.
Yeah.
Here, the, the town will be invoiced for that fee beginning in fiscal year 2021. That amount for Hatfield will be $2,750.
That's the flat fee.
Correct. For the year, so we'll have to budget for that.
So then what is this 45, right here?
The 45, 980-50.
Yeah.
That is the, see the 20 down at the bottom? So that's what we'll be doing in, in services, the admin fee. They break out the admin fee cost.
So that's additional?
4,083.
The HCOG fee?
This is from HCOG?
1.4.
No, the sheet you're looking at was provided by the Franklin Regional Council Governments.
Right, but it shows the HCOG admin fee going down the middle.
Oh, it does show HCOG.
HCOG fee, I'm sorry, oh.
So in other words, if I, if I read this correctly, we're going to be saving about $1,800.
So we're saving money, correct, I'm sorry.
$1,800.
So this is showing what we paid.
In addition to what we're saving by using the bids.
That's right.
And that's the important point.
That's the really important part, because the, not only the, the time and the, you know, there's legal review involved and all kinds of.
Contractuals, stuff.
Crazy stuff, so being able to take part in these bids is money in the bank.
Yep, I absolutely agree.
The diagram at the bottom of that page, it's, it's, you know, a population multiplier, how they calculate that.
So this is how Franklin Regional calculates it.
Yes.
As a sort of flat fee, but the Hampshire Council had done it based on usage.
Usage, correct.
Yep.
Well, that's a win-win. So you need a motion?
To accept the agreement and participate, by signing the agreement.
I will make a motion that we participate in the FERCOG Chapter 90 bids, highway bids for FY, is it for FY 21?
Yes.
As presented.
I'll second that motion, and I just want to say.
Absolutely, go ahead.
People have to realize, this is a pretty good deal when you, when you think that each of the items would have to be individually negotiated with separate contracts. You'd have to have like 20 contracts to get each of these items. Here, they're already a lump sum, so what, even though you're paying a fee, you're saving on the administrative costs of, of putting all that together and.
And then there's the aggregate buying power of all the, you know, all the municipalities that are taking part in it, and so you really end up jockeying for a better price on all of everything, so.
Okay, yeah, thank you, Ed, for pointing it out, and Diana. So the motion's made and seconded. Any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, great, thank you. All right, HR policy review, section 23.
So revisiting this again.
Yes.
So we didn't have it in our packet at the previous meeting, and I had reported that, you know, there are a few surrounding communities that do require their drivers to, to participate in the random drug and alcohol testing, or it's just their, their CDL drivers. And I, I did, I dropped the ball and didn't follow up as quickly as I should have, but I.
You didn't drop the ball, this is fine.
Spoke with the COA director and the school superintendent. One thing I neglected to point out is our HR policy is applicable to all town employees excluding the school department. So when we talked about this policy, we had said it would include the van drivers, because those are town vehicles.
Right.
And then, of course, our COA van drivers. So I, I think we might want to.
Include our school van drivers.
The HR policy is not applicable to the school department employees. However, when I talked with, with John Robert, he, he said that he certainly would be willing to discuss it with the school committee and that they, you know, could consider.
And I would hope they would consider.
Right.
Something this.
So I have sent what you have in your packet, and I, I added at the very top, number one, any employee that operates a town-owned or leased vehicle shall be subject to random alcohol and drug testing. I would also recommend that we, we go back to our town, use of town vehicle policy, which we have already visited and reviewed, that and insert language in there. But I have forwarded this to town council to review.
Okay, so it hasn't been reviewed yet?
Yeah, we haven't received a review.
We should probably wait until we hear back.
That's what I was going to suggest.
And then I, the other, the other thing I'm curious about is if we adopt this policy, we now have to put in some type of protocol for actually doing the testing, and there's, there's an expense there.
That's right.
Yes.
And I, I haven't done that yet either, so.
And, you know, because if we, if we, I mean, we really should do this. I'm not saying it's something that should be happening constantly, but.
I was going to talk to the company that, that the town uses for the DPW employees and see if they might be able to provide that service.
Yeah, maybe get an estimate of what it might be.
Because we'll have to budget for that.
And maybe what's, what's a reasonable amount of random tests to be issuing based on our employee, the size of our employee pool. You know, I, I don't think we want to go overboard with it, but we want to make sure that we're, that we have safe drivers.
Yeah, absolutely.
And, yes, I would agree. Okay, so we're just.
So that's just another piece of that, a little bit of research on that.
Okay, wait till the lawyer.
Thank you, Marlene.
Yes, thank you.
You're welcome.
Excuse me. Okay, Town Hall renovations update. Ed, did you want to take that, or?